...the design process. And then we return to the board after the design team completed their work in November and then roll out the stakeholder process. We had parallel stakeholder meetings. We looked at the, we had two groups, one that looked specifically at the northern boundaries and one that looked at the southern boundaries. It's a lot to take in. Our, our school district is very long north to south. The school, the school buildings on the south geographically don't have a lot in common with those in the north. And so it made sense to really create two parallel stakeholder groups. One that would look at the southern schools, one that would look at the northern schools. And those stakeholder groups we had on December 2nd. And December 15th, we had the 81 participants, families and staff members who participated in that process. So it was a, a lot of great input came out of those stakeholder meetings. While we were doing the stakeholder meetings, we had all that information available and transparent on the website. And then families were encouraged to look at the documents that the stakeholder groups would be looking at. They had access to absolutely everything that the stakeholder groups had access to. And then to submit their response, their thoughts on those plans via survey. We had 599 responses on those surveys. We don't have very many surveys that we do with families that give us 599 responses. So there's a lot of engagement in that process. The interesting thing too, when our facilitator said this would happen, that you're going to get a lot of feedback. That's really, really good that you're going to want to act on. So we were able to take some of that feedback, especially where we found the means, and build those into the plan. So thanks to all those 599 responders to the survey who gave us input. Who reflected on what they thought were the strengths and then potential improvements to the plan because it was really, really helpful. One of the ideas really that came from the plan, it wasn't initially where we were going with this, but it was, or came from the stakeholders was a two-phase implementation. People ask, can we delay this? We're not quite ready and our family or it's been a really tough couple of years with the pandemic. Can we wait a year on this? Can we delay it? And so the design team got together and we asked just that question. And we spent some time talking about what would be the problem of doing that. We felt we really could do that in some cases, not entirely, but we could go with the two-phase implementation. And so this slide shows what that would be. Phase one, Onika and North Dell, North Star Elementary. North Star is scheduled to open in September of 2022. It'll be ready to go. And so that needs to happen and we'll be able to implement that phase immediately. And then the second one is the middle schools. One of the challenges we are experiencing right now with our current attendance boundaries is that our central middle school is built to capacity. It's bursting at the seams. Sunrise Park has more space. And then ultimately when Sunrise moves into the South Campus facility, they're going to have quite a bit more space. So the middle school, some action needs to occur. And Sunrise or Central is bursting at the seams for sure. So the proposal is that we do a two-phase implementation. We do Onika and North Star and the middle schools in phase one for the 22, 23 school year. And then the phase two implementation would be all of our remaining elementary schools. This map shows our current attendance boundaries. You can see some challenges with this, with this map, especially as you look at the central portion of the school district. You can see where Lincoln, Birch Lake, Lake Ares, Willow Lane all come together. And there's some really awkward lines there that don't make a ton of sense. They, they evolved that way over time, partly because we didn't make wholesale, complete attendance boundary changes. We made smaller attendance boundary changes trying to disrupt as much as, or little as possible. But then you end up with some really awkward attendance boundaries. I always share that when my children were young, I used to drive past Matoska to bring my kids to Bel Air Elementary. And so, and it was because when they closed Gulfview, they divided some, just the Gulfview families and that was it. And when they closed Bel Air, we did the same thing. So it wasn't really until 2012 when there was a significant change. And that's when Matoska became a district Hawaii and Texas. And so you also will notice on our current boundaries map that there are, there's not a tenant boundary. Close to Matoska, Georgia. Okay, so part of the challenges we needed to solve is balance out our schools and then get our attendance boundaries a little more logical while we're making that. So that's where we started. If you go to the next slide, we'll see the phase one map. So this would be what's proposed for implementation in September. And it addresses the Hugos, the two Hugo elementaries, Onika and North Star. And you can see the western boundaries would attend Onika and the eastern boundary would attend North Star. This map also shows the middle school implementation with Central being purple and Sunrise Park in yellow. This can be a little funky to look at in terms of, one of our guiding change, one of our goals was, can we find a way to keep our elementary schools together? And that was very challenging to do without, it was very challenging to do. And, but we got great feedback from stakeholders saying, the plan looks good. I get the logic. Can we keep our elementary schools, our fifth graders moving onto the same middle school? Seems like a logical thing. It's very challenging to do with a north to south school district. Where you're trying to shift some of your enrollment to the south end for middle schools. So it's hard to do. And for phase one, you can see, if you look at the Birch Lake attendance area, it's kind of a U-shaped attendance area. You can see some areas there are not, would go to Central and then most of it would go to Sunrise. That's only for the phase one, year one implementation. And it's drawn that way because it matches the elementary implementation in year two. Any questions on this one before I move on? Because I did, once the map's gone, it's gone, but I can look back and forth if you need us. And so this is, yeah, this is the phase two map. And so when you see the phase two elementary attendance boundaries in place, the phase one middle school boundaries make a lot more sense. Because you can see they match the elementaries. And the feedback like it said from stakeholders was send all elementary kids to the same school and this does that. Now, there are some elementary areas that have changed and that allows that to happen. In terms of middle school, the one that changes the most would be Birch Lake. Because Birch Lake primarily goes to Central Middle School now and Birch Lake would shift to Sunrise Park with the new plan. And that would affect it in the fall of 22. You can see each elementary school shifts a little bit. I'll walk through those as well as I can. So let's start from the top and you can see Onika and North Star. The dividing line for those two schools, geography helped us a lot because there's some natural geography that allows us to draw a line. And then the road access to the two sites kind of directs us that, that way too. And, and then the demographics and how do you make sure that the schools, well, it's all in there probably the same numbers. So that's how we ended up with Onika and North Star. If you look at Otter Lake next, Otter Lake is largely the same. There's a little bit of a line that changes up against Onika, but there's, there's no elementary kids living in that area. It just, it's probably a direction that makes sense. It just follows the road. But there is a small area south in the southern part of Otter. So if we go back one, you can see the very southern portion of Otter there as it bumps up against Badness. That moves into Badness Elementary. And that's why that middle school line is drawn there. That's really from County to the south, Green Haven to the north, 35 East to the east and Elizabeth Lane to the west.
Sorry, Mr. Walter, we have a question. What?
Does anybody know what neighborhood area that is? That, that, just that maybe little chunk there of Onika?
Yeah, it's just the little, oh, on the north end?
No, at the bottom, at the south end of Otter Lake, that section that was in Badness High School is now.
Yeah, it's Green, it's south of Green Haven. So it's the area south of Green Haven between the interstate and Elizabeth Lane. Is there that anywhere? I'm not sure if there's a name, but I never heard of the county. I was. Okay. Lincoln, going back to Lincoln, you can see Lincoln has a very odd attendance boundary too. Lincoln and Birch fit together kind of like a puzzle and then the shift makes those a little more logical. The fact that Birch and Lincoln are as close to each other as they are makes it challenging. You know, it'd be better if the school were located in the middle of the attendance boundary. If those schools were built, there were a lot more kids in those neighborhoods than there are today. And so now you have two schools that are geographically pretty close and there's not a lot of kids between the two of them. And so short of removing one of those schools, we're going to have that challenge there. Birch, again, going up with the, okay, so Birch is the U-shaped and then Birch becomes a much more logical attendance boundary in the end. Going down to Badness, Badness is probably the least changed of all of the attendance boundaries. And with the exception that it does inherit that little southern portion of Otter Lake. Let's do Lake Ares. Now we'll go to Willow. Next, Willow currently has again challenging attendance boundary. It stretches from the interstate all the way to Century, the southern portion of the school district. And so you have a lot of people on that southern portion of the school district for whom there's a closer elementary. And so we felt like that should be addressed. So from the second, Whiteberry Avenue to Bel Air and south of County Road Gap. Again, Whiteberry Avenue to Bel Air and then south to County Road Gap becomes Lake Ares. Lake Ares does give up some of the downtown area. And so it really goes from south of the lake down to the interstate and then from Whiteberry Avenue to Bel Air. And then Matoska will have a small attendance boundary. It'll still, it will still be a district-wide attendance area. But it will have an assigned attendance area too. One of the challenges, it's a very popular school people want to attend, but one of the challenges, people live really close to it sometimes, that can get in. And so it makes sense that the people who live right on top of it, so close to Matoska should attend there. And so in the future, this will be about 50% attendance boundary and 50% district. And that's about the breakdown. That's about what the breakdown is now. Become the kids in that area right now, it's approximately, it's like 5248 or something if I recall. For the board to understand, we said this to the design team, if you were saying, let's establish a main school. How do we determine what most likely will be attendance? We would have set 50% in the nearest of the boundary, 50% from the district as a whole. And it just turns out that you're within a couple of percentages of what we would normally model. So the design that you're seeing actually is what we would, is all very valid and reasonable structure. Yeah, and again, you know, these boundaries change with a lot of feedback, the surveys and the stakeholder groups. They said, Dennis and Ray guaranteed us that these will change. We felt like we had combed through it so carefully and yet put that many eyes on something, just a lot of good ideas surface. Again, thanks to all those who read them.
Walter, my question.
I am looking, maybe I'm out, I've been looking back and forth at the Lake Ares, different south, all the nooks and crannies. And I noticed that you have the new early childhood tech district office and that's probably on the next slide that you ever talked about the other. Can't really read that one. But I'm just wondering, that is where you also intend the adult ed program slash senior, because they're not listed there.
At Sunrise Park. Yeah, when district, yeah. When Sunrise Park Middle School moves into South Campus, then we'll renovate that Sunrise Park building for District Center. Senior Program Transition Education Center and Early Childhood.
Okay, well, they weren't listed, so I kind of wondered. And I know the group is still murmuring over what we want to be called, senior, adult ed, whatever. Just so long as they won't move elsewhere and I just had to see that. Thanks.
Yeah. So this slide shows our middle school boundary changes for next year. And so you can see those students who are in the current Birch Lake boundary. That overlaps next year's Birch Lake boundary or the 23, 24 Birch Lake boundary will be the student tool shift. And so that blue hatched area where Birch Lake is, those students will be assigned Sunrise Park next year. And then at the, again, in the northern Badness, southern Otter Lake area, that will also be in the Sunrise Park area. This is a closer look at that. We'll have this on our website as well. And the TeamWorks team put together this tighter map so people can see exactly where that line is. Because those wider maps make it a little harder to see exact streets, but you can see here. And so all of that Birch Lake, there are 82 current sixth and seventh graders who will be in seventh and eighth grade. At Sunrise Park next year and 29 current fifth graders at Birch who would be assigned to Sunrise Park. And then this next slide looks at that southern Otter Lake, northern Badness boundary. And that's a smaller group. It's 14 current sixth and seventh graders and four current fifth graders. Questions on any of that?
I do. I have a quick question. So for the Matoska students, will they go to middle school based on the boundary in which they live? So let's say a kid from Hugo chooses to go to Matoska, they will go to Central because they live in Hugo?
Yeah, and that's the way it occurs right now.
Okay, okay. And then for those students who will be in seventh and eighth grade next year, who will be switching middle schools, would they have the option to stay?
Yeah, so that would, that's a great question. So I'm going to be an eighth grader at Central next year, but now I'm being, I'm being reassigned to Sunrise Park. Can I just stay at Central? And, you know, I would expect that that would be possible. So we have an inter-district transfer process that's been in place for years and years and years. And many families take advantage of it right now, often because of daycare or some, some issue like that. But, so families who are being reassigned could inter-district transfer to their current school, to the school that they're currently at.
Thank you.
Now, that's always with the caveat of, there are, you know, that we have to have space in that school. And so if we have a lot of, part of that staffing, if we know the families want to be there, we can staff that building accordingly. If the request comes in in August when the building's staffed or maybe even June, July, that's getting late for us. And the staffing's fairly well set, so we've got, and students, inter-district transfer would be hard at that point.
Ms. Davis?
And when a student intra-district transfers, are they provided transportation or would they then have to have?
Yeah, and we have some frequently asked questions here that we're going to walk through. Because these are just the questions that we anticipated, not only board members, but members of the community who have. So if it's okay, I'll walk through those. Okay, so the first one, can students remain at their current school after new boundaries are implemented? They can introduce a transfer request and assuming there's room in that, in that school, then we would honor that. Will transportation be provided if we apply to stay at our current school? Transportation's not provided outside of one's assigned attendance boundary. And so we currently have students who open a role of inter-district transfer to a different school. And then maybe on the border, they can walk safely to an existing stop. And provided there's room on that bus, they can, can get on that bus if they'd like. So that would continue to be our practice. However, it, I just will note that there won't necessarily be buses running through the middle of an attendance boundary for which students are assigned. So it would really be around those edges. Or sometimes parents have chosen, I know I could drive six blocks to the nearest bus stop. I'd rather drive my kids six blocks than three miles. Some people choose to do that. Can my student attend their phase two elementary school in the fall of 22? And so we would like to accommodate as many of those families who wish to do that as possible. Because, especially in kindergarten, if you're going to be enrolling your kindergartner, you might not, you probably won't want to move them to their new school the next year. So we'd like to accommodate as many families. Again, that'd be the inter-district quest for people to point that out that they'd like to start a year early. And then we would really hard to make that happen as best we can. Were parents, were parents, are our parents engaged in this discussion? Again, through stakeholder meetings and then through the survey of which we got really significant participation. And can implementation be delayed to allow families' time to plan? And that is what we're doing. So we're, where we can delay implementation, and that's at all elementary schools with the exception of North Star and Onika. We're delaying that for a year. We can't delay the middle school just because of the demands on. Why was an attendance boundary added for Matoska? And I talked about that a little bit, that Matoska has families who live very close to it and they want to attend Matoska. And we haven't been able to accommodate them in some cases. So to build that small attendance area boundary around Matoska, make that happen seems like the right thing to do. And, and that's what people who live in that, that neighborhood have asked for. What ideas were considered for the Willow attendance boundary? And this is a, a question I'll bring up because it was a significant part of the conversation within our stakeholder groups. In some cases, it might have been some families who lived in the Willow attendance area, but primarily it was families outside the Willow attendance boundary. Willow is our most diverse school and our lowest socioeconomic school. And so as we looked at the demographics of each of our schools, Willow stands out. It's, it's a bit different in that demographically it looks different than our other schools and socioeconomically it's different than some of our other schools. And so the question became, how do we balance that out? And should we balance it out? And so we spent a lot of time discussing that. And one of our primary goals too was for kids to attend the elementary school closest to their home. And the neighborhood, the neighborhood schools reflect the neighborhood area. They're like Willow reflects the neighborhood that Willow's in. And Willow families should be able to live close to their home like every other family. And, and so it felt like the Willow attendance area was changed a bit, it's actually a little bit smaller, I think, than it was. But that's, that's kind of the discussion that evolved around Willow. And we have other members of the design team here if anyone wants to add anything. How many current households will be affected by shifting the elementary boundaries? So in Hugo and Onika, it's, you know, it's most of them in terms of, you know, we had a K1 building and a 25 building. So all of those families will have some impact. In terms of the other buildings, it's about 200 families at the elementary level that will see a change in their attendance boundaries. And at the middle school level, it's 129. Why, and this is a good question and it's one that we got a lot of feedback on, especially from Birch families. Why are families who live closer to Central Middle School being bused to Sunrise Park Middle School by the new plan? And that was the challenge of this goal of shifting some of our enrollment from northern schools southward. And it's really challenging to do. And so by keeping all of Birch together and having that whole attendance boundary shift, then the students stay together. It helps us balance out our enrollment between the two schools a bit. And so that's how we came up with that. And some people have also asked, can we wait a year? There's some challenges. Our sixth graders, if we waited a year, would go to Sunrise for one year. Give me a second. They would go to Central for sixth grade, Sunrise for seven, and then South Campus for eight. And so we're trying to avoid that one year in three different school buildings. And how many households will be affected by the shifting middle schools? And again, that's 129. Okay, so next steps, we'll be posting maps. We want the school board to have the first chance at this and then we'll be putting the maps up on the website. And along with FAQ, and then we'll be bringing it back to the school board on February 14th. Free to vote on it.
I just have a quick question. It's just my curiosity. About a year ago, we were talking about how we were losing students due to COVID to other areas. When we calculate these districts, we calculate if those students come back. With every issue, all of a sudden they all came back. Would now our numbers all be up?
Yeah, so what we, what we did is we had, we had designed, as was true several years ago for the planning around the high school and everything, about a 75% market share. Then what we did is we took a look based upon the last couple of years where it's gone up and down. So when we, because it's different for elementary versus middle, so what we did is we modeled that, that over time that you'd move to a 75% market share. So when you look at the details in the report, it actually shows you school by school, what gain would that be over the next 10 years? And so there was assumption that there would be gain back from some of the loss and additional gain in those areas. If you have above 75% market share, right now we kept the current market share, we didn't reduce it. So it's a 75% interval. But you can look on the chart and you'll see that if you look at the chart, the, the first line, we call the yellow line. It shows you the gain in each school of market share growth.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm impressed if it is. Thanks for all the work and, and think that community members have participated because I can't imagine the level of detail that you guys went through to make it, you know, make these recommendations.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, agenda item B2, July 22, we're
Next on the agenda, agenda item B2, FY '22 revised budget, FY '23 projected budget, Mr. Wall and Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. We'll start with this slide because we, we'll start a budget conversation, just reminding you of the cycle of the budget, because we're really balancing and discussing two different budgets at one time. So we're at the bottom or the left-hand side of that budget cycle right now, it's January, February, we're looking at our mid-year budget adjustments, and we're projecting our budget for the next fiscal year. So in February, you'll vote on approving the current, or the budget adjustments, and then in June, you'll approve the '22, '23, the preliminary '22, '23 budget. Andy Johnson is our Director of Finance, and she's been crunching numbers, and I'll let her explain it.
Thank you, Tim. So the first thing, whenever we're discussing budget, the first thing we do is review enrollment. As you're all very well aware, enrollment is what drives virtually all of our revenue within the school district. So unfortunately for us, we are seeing a slight decrease in enrollment related to COVID, and that's what's playing into the revised budget that we'll be showing you today. So this graph just shows where we were projecting our enrollment to be. We went to the voters for the building referendum, so that's the black dotted line. The gray line shows the enrollment that we thought we wouldn't have when we were preparing the preliminary budget for this school year. And then the orange line shows where we actually are now that we're into the school year and really able to count the kids that we have in seats. So if we look at the '21, '22 school year, you can see that in the preliminary budget, we were basing that budget based on 8,595 students. And right now, with the revised budget, we're predicting 8,314 students. So we have a decrease of 281 students, so that's playing into the numbers that we'll go into now. So this is very high level, there's detailed information in the packet for you to review, but I'll just go through kind of what the big changes are from year to year. So if we look at the, there's the four columns, the first column, the preliminary '21, '22, our revenues are going from 125 million to 128 million. And that shift is really related to federal COVID funding that we've received. We've received about $2.8 million of funding. So there's a corresponding increase in our revenues related to that. At the time that we developed the preliminary budget, we built it on a lot of assumptions, as you're well aware. At that time, the legislature hadn't yet decided what the state aid formula increase would be. So we built that budget based on a 0% increase. It came back with a 2.45% increase, which was great. And that increase really offsets for this year, the loss related to students. So really, that 2.45% gets eaten up by the 281 students that were down. If we look at our total expenditures, we're going from 124 million to 131 million. There's a few different things going into that, but 3 million is related to that federal COVID money. About 2 million is related to our long-term facility maintenance funds for LTFM. So with the preliminary budget, we were projecting to have a fund balance in our LTFM, and you can see that down towards the bottom, we had restricted for LTFM fund balance. And after preparing that budget MDE, or the Department of Education came back and said, no, you can't do that, you have to spend all of your money in the year that you receive. So that time, that just means that we're increasing our expenses related to LTFM. And then the remainder is mostly due to salary settlements. So at the beginning of the year, all of our contracts were open, so now as we have finished negotiations with many of our groups, we know exactly where those settlements are, and that's built into the revised budget. So then we have that net change in fund balance. You can see we were predicting to go ahead by about 685,000. In reality, we're now looking at about a $2.5 million deficit, but again, that swing is largely related to that LTFM shift. So then we go into each of the different fund balance setups that we have, but one that we really focus on, as you know, is the unassigned, so in blue. And we're actually showing an increase in our unassigned fund balance for the revised budget, largely just related to the operations from last year. You know, our other results came in better than we were anticipating. And so we're able to shift from some of the different assigned fund balances into our unassigned, and we'll end up at about 10,812,000 for this year, which puts us at 8.2%. So we're meeting our fund balance minimum for this school year. Any questions on that revised budget, or I'll go into the projected for next school year? Any questions? Okay, so a couple of assumptions going into next year. So next year is built on the enrollment that we showed previously. We know where state aid is going to be, that has been approved by the board or by the state legislature, and now we know pretty solid estimates for our expenses related to salary settlements. So projecting about 126 million dollars of expenses and meeting about $3.8 million of budget adjustments to get us to total expenditures of 127 million. That $3.8 million is really just to keep our fund balance percentage at the 8% according to fund balance policy. So when we have that $3.8 million of budget reductions, that puts our unassigned fund balance at 10,190,000 for next school year. The following year, we would be looking at about $1.4 million of budget reductions. That gets us to be just about balanced for that school year and keeps us at that 8% target for our end of fund balance percentage.
Any questions about the projected budgets?
So then what are our next steps? So starting now, the rest of, oh yeah, sorry, thank you. So now rest of the month, and then into February, we'll be doing budget presentations to staff meetings and preparing proposed budget adjustments. We'll come back to it for the February regular board meeting to approve the revised budget estimate said, and then later in February, presenting the proposed budget adjustments. And March will be approving the budget adjustments or asking for approval of the budget adjustments. And then May, working on presenting to the actual preliminary budget after we know kind of more actuals of the changes that we are anticipating, and then asking for approval of that at the June regular board meeting.
Ms. Daniels? Just to kind of back up to the other slide, but the budget reductions, can you talk a little bit about that? And we're anticipating that. We're not.
Yep, yep. So well, this time last year, we were predicting about $3 million of budget reductions. So it's up a little bit. The biggest factor that's changed this year is our compensatory funding. So compensatory funding is revenue generated to the school district based on the number of free reduced students that you report, and we've seen a drastic decrease in our free and reduced students, largely because meals are free for everybody. So there's not that impetus for parents to fill out that paperwork. So that was about $800,000 of decreased revenue for last year. So, you know, the $3 million that we had been projecting, and then the $800,000 of compensatory decrease, that really kind of makes up what we're showing for budget adjustments for next year. And then the following year, we weren't predicting quite this high of budget reductions, but that's really the impact of the enrollment we're predicting enrollment for that coming
Any other questions?
Now, the primary benefit of filling out the educational benefits application is the free meals. And so when meals are free, there's a ton of motivation for people to fill it up. The double-edged sword on that is the compensatory funding is based entirely on that. And so across the state, there's a lot of school districts that are seeing a significant decrease in the compensatory funding because families are just plain not filling that out. And you can understand why. But it's a significant amount for us that we weren't anticipating. We didn't know, I mean, at that time, we didn't know meals would be free for '21, '22.
So, Mr. Wall and Ms. Johnson, would you say that between the compensatory funding and the decrease in the enrollment of 281 students, those are two of the main reasons for that? And I wrote down enrollment drives revenue because there's a certain dollar amount from the legislature that comes to the district per student, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. We get about $6,700 in state aid per student, and then when you consider all of the different funding streams, it's about $10,000 per student.
I'm just wondering, as I read all of the legislative wish lists and possible scenarios with the Sledge Fund of the State, what impact that might have if they work on the cross subsidy or something like that?
We wonder the same thing. We're hopeful, right? I mean, we're not alone in this place.
Anything the legislature does would help our picture.
Right.
We can't assume anything right now.
We can't assume, but let's say that, you know, we receive a made basket of money from the state.
That helps that number.
And then it would come back with a presentation about what we don't have to cut.
For sure.
Yeah, and I think that's why we call this the projection right now for the coming school years. There's a lot of assumptions built into it, and so we're hopeful as well. You know, that legislative session, there'll be some relief for school districts, but we can't assume that at this point.
I was just hoping.
Yeah, we are too.
Ms. Lloyd?
I know we talked about this during the finance meeting, but do, is it, would it be possible to try to find out where some of those students went so that we have some kind of idea? Because I wish the other two guys were here, if we're talking about market share for some of these areas. I mean, that would be a good, you know, be an important data point to understand going forward.
Yep, absolutely. That's one of our next steps, and we talked about that at CAP, and about how we find these kids, then we reach out to them.
I mean, I assume it's probably a building by building thing that has to be done to locate the records and the record requests, but.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be that, even really that hard. Much of the information we have, it's just a matter of mining it. So it's on the queue of things that we're pulling, that we're pulling up. And then we'll be researching.
Thanks.
Dr. Minister?
I do think the good data you've collected on just all of the boundaries and the fine new plan to roll out these great new buildings, if it's presented with a splash, may draw back some people, because I hear people hesitating because they don't know yet really what will happen. And I think once it's solid, it's more likely to pull some people back with a brand-new school and things like that. I hope.
I think it's.
So we have an advertising plan set to go down.
Yeah, we're, Chris is over there. Yes. I think it's important too, that, it's some additional context, this is, we've talked about this in terms of Minnesota's overall enrollment went down. You know, we're not an outlier in the fact that our enrollment went down. And in fact, nationally, public school enrollment is down about 3%, and that's about what we're down. So we're not an outlier in any way in terms of being hit by the pandemic at the moment. Some districts haven't been hit as hard, others have been hit harder than us. So we're about where the average school district is being hit in the United States.
I think it's better than average though, because we have these fantastic new options at all of our schools.
Right, so then, so, and we're situated, you know, we were growing before the pandemic, and we're doing a lot of work because of that, and the building is continuing in the district, you know, the housing growth is still continuing. So we have, there are some positives too, and this is kind of a bleak time as we go through the budget cycle, and we'll be, but hopefully we can, hopefully we can come, we can bounce out of it perhaps quicker than we might have, maybe than some other districts might because of the good things we do have going.
And I know Melissa's got her magic camera to be going. But I do think when things are solid, they know where their kids' attendance area is, they know who they're gonna sign up and where for preschool, I mean, lots of things should fall into place. And if they realize, I remember my kids going to Lincoln, and I can hardly wait to tour all the new stuff.
Ms. Daniels?
I was just thinking about that Northern Schools, North Star and Oronika, and how they're, you know, so butted up against those neighborhoods, and then they'd be so much closer for some of those kids to come to. I mean, I'm sure that when you did your study, you thought about those kids perhaps walking down to our neighborhood schools and how the open enrollment would help in those Northern Schools anyway. And I don't know if those are on any of your projections, or, you know, I'm sure you think about that.
Yeah, that's, those were included in the projections, that there will be some drop. Looking at where neighboring schools have elementary schools located, and so in some cases, they're ways away, or they're in a very small school that doesn't have capacity.
Right.
So we have to think we're gonna draw some.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're optimistic. We're optimistic long-term about open enrollment. And that isn't, that's been a challenge for us in the last decade, 15, probably 15 years, open enrollment has been a bad dream, but we're optimistic moving forward.
Yeah. Ms. Lloyd?
Living up in Hugo and looking through the map, I don't know where you could, where else you could have put that line. I mean, because it does a lot, because you've got a kind of like a bottom, like a neighborhood right at the top where two schools are, basically you have to split that in half. So it's walkable still for both, for that large neighborhood that's up there. So the other parts weren't walkable before then anyway, so that part doesn't change.
There's kind of a drainage ditch that runs north of South through there, that's kind of a handful of lighting.
That judicial ditch number three?
They're very cleverly named.
Any further questions for Ms. Johnson and Mr. Wall? Anything else that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, that is the end of our discussion items, so I would call for a motion to adjourn.
There, Melissa. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stand aye.